I am the council president pro tempore. Today is Wednesday, April 14th, 2021. And in accordance with Governor Baker's March 12th of 2020 executive order, modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law, the Boston City Council is conducting this meeting remotely. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting As we begin, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, you're muted.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Present.
Counselor Braden.
Present.
Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Sabi George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Here. Present.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Mahia.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
And Counselor Wu. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We're now moving on to our invocation. Counselor Julia Mahia will introduce our clergy today. And after the invocation is delivered, invite all who are able to please rise as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I'm off mute. Yes. So, thank you, Counselor O'Malley, for allowing me to offer today's invocation. I'm really excited and honored to invite us to be in community with Dr. Arlene Hall, who is the first minister in her family. And after serving as a youth pastor for over 10 years in Dorchester in 1999, Pastor Arlene Hall, along with her husband Bishop Raymond Hall, answered the call of God and founded the Deliverance Temple Worship Center in Dorchester, 232 Columbia Road in Dorchester, to be exact. Currently, Dr. Hall serves as the leader, the lead pastor for DTWC, where God is transforming the lives of men and women, positioning them for their destiny. Dr. Hall is an advisor and a mentor to many women and men in ministry, as well as in the corporate world. I'm incredibly grateful and humbled to have her here with us today. Thank you so very much.
Amen. Thank you, Counselor Julia. We love you. And pleasant good morning to the council president and all of the councilors in your respectful places. God bless you. I am grateful to stand before you as God's servant to pray prayer as you open your session this morning. Let us pray. Father, today I bring this body of the Boston City Council before you as they conduct business on behalf of the city of Boston. I thank you, Father God, for your calling on their lives. Thank you for the passion that you have given them to forward the work of the city of Boston. Lord, we understand that this work, that their task to do is weighty and mighty. And so I ask you that you will give clarity to their agenda in the name of Jesus, so that it reflects the heart of the city of Boston. As James admonished, those who need wisdom, ask of our generous God, and he gives generously. So I ask you today that you will give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding beyond their years. I ask you that you will give them strategies and resources. I ask you that you will give them partners, partnership in the city of Boston and beyond, partnership in the community and in the corporate world, partnership with clergies and with churches. And Lord, in this unprecedented time, we ask you that you will give them the wisdom as they give leadership, even, Lord, Father, as we continue in this pandemic. I pray an edge of protection around them. I put an edge of protection around our mayor, Mayor Kim Janey. Put an edge of protection around each council member and their families. Put an edge of protection around the support staff and their family. We ask you to put an edge of protection around the city of Boston. And Father, according to Jeremiah 29, you have placed us in the city. And so we pray for the welfare of the city. We pray for the peace of the city, so we ourselves can find peace. So, Father God, I thank you for all the business that will be conducted today and beyond. And we thank you for the insight and the foresight that you will give as you, Lord Father, do in them and for them and through them what they cannot do without you. I commend them into your capable care in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen and amen. Amen.
Amen.
Bless you. God bless you.
Thank you very much, Reverend Hall. Thank you for those inspiring, passionate words. Counselor Mahia will now lead the body in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, with the public, public, all its stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Mahia, and thank you again, Reverend Hall. We're now moving on to the approval of the minutes, which is the first order of business. Is there any discussion on approving the matter? Seeing none, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu. Mr. President, the minutes have been approved.
Great. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Now moving right along to communications from her honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk, would you mind reading dockets 0524 through 0546? And please take any coffee or tea break in between if you need to.
Thank you. Docket 0524, Message in Order for Any Annual Appropriation and Tax Order for the FY 2022, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 12th, 2021. Docket 0525, Message in Order for An Annual Appropriation For The School Department For The FY 2022, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 12th, 2021. Docket 0526, Message in Order Approving An Appropriation Of $40 Million To The Other Post-Employment Benefits Known As OPEB Liability Trust Fund, Established Under Section 20 of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32B, filed in the office of the clerk on April 12th, 2021. Docket Number 0527, Message in Order Approving An Appropriation Of $8,600,000 From The City's Capital Grant Fund In Order To Provide Funding For Various Transportation And Public Realm Improvements. These projects are aligned with the goals of the Go Boston 2030, the city's transportation master plan. The funds shall be credited to the capital grant fund from the parking meter fund, filed in the office of the clerk on April 12th, 2021. Docket Number 0528, Message in Order Approving An Appropriation Of $2 Million From The City's Capital Grant Fund To Address The Impact of Transportation Network Services On Municipal Roads, Bridges, And Other Transportation Infrastructure Or Any Other Public Purpose Substantially Related To The Operation Of Transportation Networks Services In The City. Such funds will be transferred and credited to the capital grant fund For Revenue Received From The Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure and Press Fund, filed in the office of the clerk on April 12th, 2021. Docket Number 0529, Message in Order Approving An Appropriation Of $2,376,540 To The Acquisition Of Interests In Land And The Acquisition Of Assets Or The Landscaping, Alteration, Remediation, Rehabilitation, Improvement Of Public Land, Construction, Reconstruction, Rehabilitation, Improvement, Alterations, Remodeling, Enlargement, Demolition, Removal Of Extraordinary Repears Of Public Buildings, Facilities, Assets, Work, Or Infrastructure For The Cost Of Feasibility Studies Or Engineering Or Architectural Services For Plans Or Specifications For The Development Design, Purchase And Installation Of Computer Hardware Or Software And Computer-Assisted Integrated Financial Management And Accounting Systems And Any And All Costs Incidental Or Related To The Above-Described Projects For The Purpose Of Various City Departments, Included Boston Center For Youth And Families, The Department Of Innovation And Technology, Environment, Fire, Neighborhood Development, Office Of Arts And Culture, Parks And Recreation, Police, Property Management, Public Works And Transportation Department, Boston Public Library, Boston Redevelopment Authority, And Public Health Commission, filed in the office of the clerk on April 12th, 2021. Docket Number 0530, Message in Order Approving An Appropriation Of $50,438,000 To The Acquisition, excuse me, Of Interest In Land Or The Acquisition Of Assets Or The Landscaping, Alteration, Remediation, Rehabilitation, Or Improvement Of The Public Land, The Construction, Reconstruction, Rehabilitation, Improvement, Alteration, Remodeling, Enlargement, Demolition, Removal Or Extraordinary Repairs Of Public Buildings, Facilities, Assets, Works, Or Infrastructure For The Cost Of Feasibility Studies And Engineering Or Architectural Services For Plans And Specifications For The Development Design, Purchase And Installation Of Computer Hardware Or Software And Computer-Assisted Integrated Financial Management And Accounting Systems And Any And All Costs Incidental Or Related To The Above-Described Projects For The Purpose Of The Boston Public Schools, filed in the office of the clerk on April 12th, 2021. Docket Number 0531, Message in Order Authorizing The City Of Boston To Enter Into One Or More Leases, Lease Purchase Or Installment Sales Agreement In Fiscal Year 2022, An Account Not To Exceed $31 Million. These funds are to be used by various city departments To The Acquisition Of Equipment And Provenance Of Their respective governmental functions. This list of equipment includes computer equipment, hardware and software, motor vehicles, trailers, ambulances, fighting fire equipment, office equipment, telecommunication equipment, photocopying equipment, medical equipment, school and educational equipment, school buses, parking meters, steel lighting installations, traffic signal equipment, and equipment functionally related to and components of the foregoing, filed in the office of the clerk on April 12th, 2021. Docket Number 0532, Message in Order Authorizing A Limit For The Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund For Fiscal Year 2022 To Support The Maintenance And Repair For BPS Facilities, Including Custodial And Utility Costs For Extended Building Time, Floor Refinishing, Landscaping, And Building Repairs. Received From Lease Permit Of Use And Parking Fees For BPS Facilities Will Be Deposited In The Fund. BPS Will Be The Only Unit Authorized To Extend From The Fund, And Such Expenditures Shall Not Exceed $2 Million. Docket Number 0533, Message in Order Authorizing A Limit Of The Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund For Fiscal Year 2022 To Repair And Purchase Boston Public Schools Computer Technology, Including Computers, Mobile Devices, And Instructional Software. This Revolving Fund Shall Be Credited With Any And All Receipts From Equipment Sales And Repair Fees For The Boston Public Schools Technology. Receipts And Resulting Expenditures From This Fund Shall Not Exceed $2 Million. Docket Number 05, excuse me, 34, Message in Order Authorizing A Limit For The Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund For The Fiscal Year 2022, Boston Public Schools Transportation Costs, Including Bus And Public Transportation Costs. This Revolving Fund Shall Be Credited With Revenue Received From The Boston Public Schools Department For The Provisions Of Transportation To Groups And Entities For Field Trips And Activities Other Than Transportation To And From School. Receipts And Resulting Expenditures From This Fund Shall Not Exceed $100,000. Docket Number 0535, Message in Order Authorizing A Limit For The Boston Police Department's Revolving Fund For Fiscal Year 2022 To Support The K-9 Unit Training Program For Offices And Police Dogs From Non-City Of Boston Law Enforcement Agencies. The Special Operations Division Will Charge Tuition And Other Fees Outside Law To Outside Law Enforcement Agencies For The K-9 Unit. The tuition and other fees by outside agencies Will Be Used To Purchase Training Equipment, Certify Instructors, Update Facilities, And Provide Funds For Other Training Needs Not Otherwise Budgeted. The Operations Division Will Be The Only Unit To Authorize And To Extend From This Fund, And Such Expenditure Shall Be Capped At $100,000. And Docket Number 0536, Message in Order Authorizing A Limit To The Boston Police Department's Revolving Fund For Fiscal Year 2022 To Pay Salaries And Benefits Of Employees And To Purchase Supplies And Equipment Necessary To Operate The Police Department Fitness Center. Revenues From This Fund Is Derived From Monthly Membership Fees. Receipts And Resulting Expenditures From This Fund Shall Not Exceed $100,000. Docket Number 0537, Message in Order Authorizing A Limit For The Boston Centers For Youth And Families Known As BCYF Revolving Fund For Fiscal Year 2022 To Pay Salaries And Benefits Of Employees And To Purchase Supplies And Equipment Necessary To Operate City Hall Child Care. This Revolving Fund Shall Be Credited With Any And All Receipts From The Tuition Paid By Parents Or Guardians For Children Enrolled At The Center. Receipts And Resulting Expenditures From This Fund Shall Not Exceed $850,000. Docket Number 0538, Message in Order Authorizing A Limit For The Distributed Energy Resource Revolving Fund For Fiscal Year 2022, Facilitate The Purchase Of Offsets Of Greenhouse Gas Emissions, Which Shall Be Associated With A Portion Of The Electricity Consumed By The City Annually, And To Operate, Maintain, Monitor, And Expand The City's Existing Solar Arrays And The Boston Public Schools Combined Heat And Power Facilities. This Revolving Fund Shall Be Credited With Any And All Receipts From The Sale Of Renewable And Alternative Energy Certificates And Demand Response Program Revenues Produced By Combined Heat And Power Units Located At Boston Public Schools Sites And Solar Renewable Energy Certificates Produced By The City's Photovoltaic Array. Receipts And Resulting Expenditures From This Fund Shall Not Exceed $150,000. Docket Number 0539, Message in Order Authorizing A Limit For The Environment Conservation Commission Revolving Fund For The Fiscal Year 2022 For The Purpose Of Securing Outside Consultation, Including Engineering Wetlands Scientists, Wildlife Biologists, And Other Experts In Order To Aid The Review And Propose Projects Of The Commission, Per The City's Ordinance Protecting Local Wetlands And Promoting Climate Change Adaptation. The Revolving Fund Shall Be Funded By Receipts From Fees Imposed By The Commission For The Purpose Of Securing Outside Consultants. The Environment Department Shall Be The Only Department Authorized To Extend From The Fund, And Such Expenditures Shall Be Capped At $50,000. Docket Number 0540, Message in Order Authorizing The Law Department Revolving Fund For Fiscal Year 2022 To Purchase Goods And Services For Repairs To City Property. This Revolving Fund Shall Be Funded By Receipts From Recoveries For Damages To City Property Caused By Third Parties. The Law Department Will Be The Only Unit Authorized To Extend From The Fund, And Such Expenditures Shall Be Capped At $200,000. Excuse me. Docket Number 0541, Message in Order Authorizing A Limit Of The Mayor's Office Of Arts And Culture Revolving Fund For Fiscal Year 2022 To Purchase Goods And Services To Support Public Art And To Enhance The Public Realm Throughout The City Of Boston. This Revolving Fund Shall Be Funded By Receipts From Easements Within The Public Way Granted By The Public Improvements Commission. The Mayor's Office Of Arts And Culture Will Be The Only Unit Authorized To Extend Funds From Such From And Such Expenditure Shall Be Capped At $120,000. Docket Number 0542, Message in Order Authorizing A Limit For The Mayor's Office Of Arts And Culture Revolving Fund For Fiscal Year 2022 To Purchase Goods And Services To Support The Operation Of The Strand Theater. This Revolving Fund Shall Be Funded By Receipts From Rental Fees For The Use Of The Strand Theater. The Mayor's Office Of Arts And Culture Will Be The Only Unit Authorized To Extend From The Fund, And Such Expenditures Will Be Capped At $30,000. Docket Number 0543, Message in Order Authorizing A Limit Of The Mayor's Office Of Tourism Revolving Fund For Fiscal Year 2022 To Purchase Goods And Services To Support Events And Programming On And Around City Hall Plaza, To Advance Tourism And To Promote Participation In Public Celebrations, Civic And Cultural Events. This Revolving Fund Shall Be Funded By Receipts From Payments For The Use Of City Hall Plaza, Pursuant To The City Of Boston's Code, Ordinance, Chapter 11-7.14. The Mayor's Office Of Tourism Will Be The Only Unit Authorized To Extend From This Fund, And Such Expenditures Will Be Capped At $50,000. Docket Number 0544, Message in Order Authorizing The Appropriation Of $1,300,000 From The Income Of The Dodge Francis Pacman Fund. The funds are to be expended under the direction Of The Commissioners Of Parks And Recreation For The Maintenance And Improvement Of Boston Common And Parks In Existence Since January 12th, 1887. Docket Number 0545, Message in Order Approving An Appropriation Of $4,400,000 From The 21st Century Fund, Also Known As The Public Educational Or Governmental TEG Access And Cable Related Fund, Pursuant To Section 53F And Three Quarters Of Chapter 44 Of The General Laws, To The PEG Access And Cable Related Grant For Cable Related Purposes Consistent With The Franchise Agreement Between The Cable Operator And The City, But Not Limited To: 1. Supporting Public And Educational Governmental Access Cable Television Services; 2. Monitoring Compliance Of Cable Operator With Franchise Government; Or 3. Preparation Of Renewal Of The Franchise License. And Docket Number 0546, Message in Order Approving An Appropriation Of $500,000 From The City's Boston Equity Fund To Create Special Revenue Project Grant In Order To Support Equity Applicants And Licensees As Defined By The Equity Program And To Be, To Establish And Operate A Cannabis Business In The City Of Boston. The fund shall be created to the special renewal, credited, I'm sorry. The fund will be credited to the Special Revenue Grant Fund From Boston Equity Fund, Established Pursuant To City Of Boston Ordinance, Chapter 8, Section 1, Section 13, Establishing The Equitable Regulations Of The Cannabis Industry In The City Of Boston.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Well done. Have a nice sip of tea or hot water with lemon. Dockets 0524 through 0546 Will be referred to the Committee on Ways And Means. Madam Clerk, would you please also update the attendance records to reflect the fact that Councilors Arroyo and Wu have joined us? And finally, and if you need to take a moment, please, you may do so. But when you are ready, please read docket number 0547.
Thank you. Docket 0547, Message in Order Authorizing The City Of Boston To Accept And Extend Reimbursements In The Amount Up To $6 Million From The Federal Emergency Management Agency And The Commonwealth, Massachusetts, For Expenses Related To The COVID-19 Event, filed in the office of the clerk on April 12th, 2021.
Thank you. Docket 0547 will be referred to the Committee on Public Health. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0548?
Certainly. Docket 0548, Message in Order Approving An Appropriation Of $1,014,000 For The Administrative And Operating Expenses Of The City Of Boston Community Preservation Committee, Known As The CPC, For The Fiscal Year 2022, And A Further Appropriation Order In The Amount Of $28,479,574 From The Community Preservation, Known As The Fund. Estimated Annual Revenue For Fiscal Year 2022 To Be Appropriated And Reserved For Future Appropriations, filed in the office of the clerk on April 12th, 2021.
Thank you. Docket 0548 will be referred to the Committee on the Community Preservation Act. Please read docket 0549.
Docket 0549, Message in Order Authorizing The City Of Boston To Accept And Extend An Amount Of $2,509,300 In The Form Of A Grant For The Boston Cultural Fund, Awarded By The Boston Redevelopment Authority To Be Administered By The Office Of Arts And Culture. The grant will fund cultural spaces, organizations, programs, artists, and activities in the South End With The Goal Of Preserving And Enhancing Cultural Activity.
Thank you very much. Docket 0549 will be referred to the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events. Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets 0550 through 0557?
Terrific. Thank you. Docket 0550, Message in Order Authorizing The City Of Boston To Accept And Extend An Amount Of $1,832,180 In The Form Of A Grant For The FY 21 Title III C Nutrition Services, Awarded By The U.S. Department Of Health And Human Services, Passed Through The Mass Executive Office Of Elder Affairs To Be Administered By The Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund home-delivered meals and meals at congregate sites. Docket 0551, Message in Order Authorizing The City Of Boston To Accept And Extend An Amount Of $1,456,653 In The Form Of A Grant For The FY 2022 State Allocation, Awarded By The U.S. Department Of Health And Human Services, Passed Through The Mass Executive Office Of Elder Affairs To Be Administered By The Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund elder lunch programs in Boston. Docket Number 0552, Message in Order Authorizing The City Of Boston To Accept And Extend An Amount Of $1,056,840 In The Form Of A Grant For The FY 21 Council On Aging, Awarded By The Mass Executive Office Of Elderly Affairs To Be Administered By The Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund the continued operation Of The Commission's Health And Housing Units And Related Services. Docket Number 0553, Message in Order Authorizing The City Of Boston To Accept And Extend An Amount Of $966,932 In The Form Of A Grant For The FFY 21 Title III B Supportive Services, Awarded By The U.S. Department Of Human Services, Passed Through The Mass Executive Office Of Elder Affairs To Be Administered By The Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund a comprehensive and coordinated health and social service system Which Assists Elders To Maintain Independent Living In Their Communities As Long As Desired. Docket Number 0554, Message in Order Authorizing The City Of Boston To Accept And Extend The Amount Of $400,680 In The Form Of A Grant For The FFY 2021 Title III A Area Plan Administration, Awarded By The U.S. Department Of Health And Human Services, Passed Through The Mass Executive Office Of Elder Affairs To Be Administered By The Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund administrative expenses Of The Age Strong Commission As The Boston Area Agency On Aging. Docket 0555, Message in Order Authorizing The City Of Boston To Accept And Extend An Amount Of $286,860 In The Form Of A Grant For The FY 21 Senior Companion Program, Awarded By The Corporation For National And Community Services To Be Administered By The Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund reimbursement for travel and meals plus stipends. Docket Number 0556, Message in Order Authorizing The City Of Docket number 0556, message and order authorizing City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $173,589 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Long-Term Care Omsbudsman Services, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund activities to resolve resident complaints about elder abuse and neglect. And docket number 0557, message and order authorizing City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $137,753 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Retired Seniors Volunteer Program, awarded by the Corporation for National and Community Service, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund food and travel reimbursements for senior community service volunteers. You're muted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you for that thorough reading. Dockets 0550 through 0557 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0558?
Thank you. Docket 0558, message and order authorizing City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $77,184 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Title III D Health Promotion Grant, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by, by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund health promotion, hell, I'm sorry, the grant will fund health promotion and disease prevention programs for seniors in Boston. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Chair Braden, you have the floor, and please feel free to be as verbose as need be so our dear clerk can catch her breath. Chair Braden, the floor is yours.
There's a lot of money here, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend and pass docket 0558 and put this money to good use as soon as possible. That is probably not enough time to allow Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, to get her breath back.
Remedy is always a virtue, I do say. So thank you. The Chair of the Committee, Counselor Liz Braden, seeks suspension of the rules and the passage of docket 0558. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0558, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0558 has been passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please read and place before the body docket 0559?
Thank you. Docket 0559, message and order authorizing City of Boston Conservation Commission to receive a property located at 108 Walter Street in Rosendale neighborhood of Boston, and identified by the City of Boston Assessing Department, parcel identification number 200519500, known in the future as the property. The property is currently in the care and custody of Boston Planning and Development Agency, known as the BPDA, and is located in the Rosendale Westland Urban Wild, and will be a valued addition to the natural neighborhood asset.
Chair here, and docket 0559 shall be remanded to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Moving right along, Madam Clerk, to reports of public officers and others. Would you begin by reading docket 0560?
Certainly. Docket 0560, communication was received from Lawrence Estacara, Chairman of the Audit Committee, updating the city council for their meeting held in independent, held by independent auditors, KPMG LLP, for the year ending December 31st, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0560 shall be placed on file. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0561.
Thank you. Docket 0561, communication was received from Council President Matt O'Malley, calling for the election of the Assistant Clerk.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes the District Counsel from Hyde Park, Counsel Arroyo. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on behalf of Alex Juntis for nomination of Assistant City Clerk. Mr. Juntis has been a valuable asset for the city. He's been diligent. He has a wealth of institutional knowledge, and I know that he's worked in great partnership with Clerk Feeny. Hopefully, I'm being long enough for her to catch her breath, but he has been a phenomenal asset to the city. I nominate him for Assistant City Clerk for a term firing in February 2024.
Thank you very much.
Second, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Arroyo has moved for the nomination of Alex Juntis as Assistant City Clerk. It has been seconded by City Council at Large Michael Flaherty. Are there any other nominations? Seeing and hearing none, we will now proceed with the election of the position of Assistant City Clerk. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? I would remind my colleagues, when the clerk calls your name, you will say the name of the person whom you wish to see remain as Assistant City Clerk. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0561, Counselor Arroyo.
Alex Juntis.
Counselor Arroyo, Alex Juntis. Counsel Baker. Counsel Bach.
Alex Juntis.
Counsel Bach, Alex Juntis. Counsel Braden.
Alex Juntis.
Counsel Braden, Alex Juntis. Counsel Campbell. I'm muted, so you didn't hear anything I just said. I yelled it in my office. Alex Juntis. Thank you. Counsel Campbell, Alex Juntis. Counsel Edwards.
Alex Juntis.
Counsel Edwards, Alex Juntis. Counsel Asabi George.
Alex Juntis.
Counsel Asabi George, Alex Juntis. Counsel Flaherty.
Alex Juntis.
Counsel Flaherty, Alex Juntis. Counsel Mejia.
Alex Juntis, and I think you missed Flynn.
Oh, my, no. I have, I'm sorry, Counsel Flynn.
Alex Juntis.
I actually marked it wrong. Thank you. Counsel Flynn, Alex Juntis. Counsel Mejia.
Alex Juntis.
Thank you. Counsel Mejia, Alex Juntis. Counsel O'Malley.
Alex Juntis.
Counsel O'Malley, Alex Juntis. And Counsel Wu.
Alex Juntis.
Counsel Wu, Alex Juntis. Mr. President, I am ever so happy to report that docket 0561 has elected Alex Juntis as the Assistant Clerk. Thank you, one and all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Congratulations, Mr. Assistant City Clerk, and it is wonderful seeing your wonderful, beautiful, and brilliant partner, Nancy Wild Juntis, on this Zoom as well. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, moving right along to reports of committees. Would you please read docket 0436?
Certainly. Docket 0436, the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Community, to which is referred on March 17, 2021. Docket number 0436, message and order authorizing City of Boston to accept and extend the amount of $100,000 in the form of a grant for Can Share FY2021, awarded by the donor group, to be administered by the Office of Food Access. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counsel Braden, the Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Chair Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had the great pleasure to meet with the folks from the Office of Food Access last week to discuss this grant from Can Share. This grant is money that's raised by City of Boston employees to support food security in our neighborhoods, especially with the purchase of vouchers that can be used at our, at our farmers markets across the city, in the summer markets, and also at five winter markets this, this winter. It's a great program, very well supported by city employees, and I would like to order, I would like to pass this.
Thank you.
Mr. Docket, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel Braden, the Chair of the Committee seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0436. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Docket 0436, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0436 has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Would you now please read docket 0202 as well as dockets 0410 through 0412 together?
Thank you. Docket 0202, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on January 27, 2021. Docket number 0202, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Matthew Blumenthal as a member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission for term expiring on May 1, 2021. Submit a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed. Docket number 0410, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on March 10, 2021. Docket number 0410, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Martha McNamara as a member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission for term expiring on May 1, 2026. Submit a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed. Docket number 0411, Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on March 10, 2021. Docket number 0411, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Pamela Beal as a member of the Back Bay, I'm sorry, Back Bay West Bay State Road Architectural Conservation Commission, her term expiring on June 30, 2023. Submit a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed. And docket number 0412, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on March 10, 2021. Docket number 0412, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Terry North as an alternate member of the Back Bay West, Back, Back State Road, Bay State Road as Architectural Conservation Commission for a term expiring on June 30, 2023. Commit a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Wu, the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Chair Wu will speak on all four dockets together, and then we will take individual votes on each, each matter. Chair Wu, the floor is yours.
Much, Mr. President. I, respecting the council's recent messaging that there is a quite crowded docket with many hearings burdening central staff, I am choosing to exercise discretion of this committee as Chair to, to take out the need and burden, given that these are such well-qualified candidates for these roles. We have a batch of four who represent, spanning two different architectural commissions, two appointments, two reappointments, and it speaks for itself. The Chair has reviewed the resumes and materials. I would invite the District Counsel who represents actually both of the areas that these commissions cover to weigh in as well, but recommend confirmation of these four individuals, Matthew Blumenthal, Martha McNamara, Pamela Beal, and Terry North, as mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So we're going to begin with the vote on docket 0202. Again, Chair Wu, see. Oh, I do apologize, Counselor Bach and Counsel Arroyo. We will begin calling on the District Counsel from Beacon Hill. Counsel Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just wanted to also vouch for these individuals, as the chairwoman mentioned, both the Bay State Road District and obviously the Beacon Hill Architectural Commissioner in my district, and the folks who are nominated here today are well-known to me and the community, and really very involved individuals. And so I think I, I can speak confidently in joining the Chair in her recommendation to the council that we pass these dockets today.
Thank you, and apologies for not calling on you sooner. Counsel Arroyo, did you have your hand raised, or was that a vestige of the earlier vote?
That is a vestige.
Perfect, thank you. Counsel Flynn, your hand is raised. Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from South Boston. Counsel Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. I proudly serve with Counselor Bach, and we represent both the Beacon Hill community. I would just echo what Counselor Bach stated about these nominees, outstanding nominees dedicated to the residents of Boston. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counsel Flynn. Any further discussion on these appointments? Seeing and hearing none, Counselor Wu is Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, seeks passage and confirmation of each of the four aforementioned appointments. The dockets will be voted on separately, beginning with docket 0202. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0202, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0202 has been confirmed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to docket 0410, which is the term for Martha McNamara. Would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0410, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam, Mr. President, docket number 0410 has been confirmed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving along to docket 0411, reappointment of Pamela Beal. Would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0411, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel, Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. President, docket 0411 has been confirmed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In the final report of committee, we are voting on docket 0412, which is the reappointment of Terry North. Would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket 0412, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden. Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes, sorry.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0412 has been confirmed unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Moving right along to matters recently heard for possible action. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0358?
Thank you. Docket 0358, order for a hearing regarding summer learning opportunities and summer planning for the 2021-2022 school year for Boston Public Schools.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Anissa Asabi George, Chair of the Committee on Education. Chair Asabi George, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. On Monday, April 12, the Committee on Education held a hearing on docket 0358 regarding summer learning opportunities for our students. The matter was sponsored by Counselor Campbell. I'd like to thank her and our colleagues, Counselors Bach, Mejia, Flynn, and Flaherty for attending. We were joined by several members of the Boston Public Schools Administration, including Dr. Filipe Pierre, BPS Deputy Chief Academic Officer, Shannon Hayes, BPS Director of Summer Learning, Zolange Martian, Program Director for BPS Early Education, or Early Childhood, Dr. Sylvia Romero Johnson, Assistant Superintendent for the Office of English Language, Office of English Learners, Ethan DuMonte-Berns, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education, and Marsha Inez Mitchell, Director of BPS Post-Secondary Initiatives and Partnerships. We were also joined by Suleika Soto, who's a Citywide Parent Council and BEJA member, Yi Chin Chen, Friends of the Children, and Lisa Lizer, who is from Educators for Excellence. This matter will stay in committee, but I wanted to highlight some of the items discussed during this hearing. At every in-person learning site, BPS will have food available for students. Students will have access to mental health supports, various types of tutoring programs, and compensatory services for special education students. We also covered summer jobs for our youth, English language learning supports, and summer athletics. Our community advocates emphasize the need for social and emotional supports for students, teachers, and school communities for changing the way we evaluate student success by incorporating a whole-student, whole-family mentality for safety and equity also as we open this summer and reopen this summer and fall. I am hopeful that despite the ongoing pandemic, this summer will be filled with many robust and engaging programs for our students to help reengage them in their communities, their social, emotional, and mental wellness, and their academics. As you talk with your constituents, I ask that we all strongly encourage our families to participate in some form of summer programming. BPS has program seats for about half of the district in addition to all of the other great summer programming across the city. For sure, there is a commitment to make sure that all students who are looking for an opportunity this summer will have access to one. I will now, if Mr. President would indulge me, hand this over to the lead sponsor for any additional comments.
Of course.
I'll be brief. I'll just say thank you, Counselor Asabi George, for scheduling this hearing so quickly, and thank you to all of the advocates and folks in administration who showed up. Great investments, more work to do. So look forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Andrea Campbell, who was the lead sponsor on docket 0358. And thank you, Counselor Anissa Asabi George, Chair of the Committee. Seeing no further discussion, docket 0358 shall remain in the Committee on Education. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0417?
Certainly. Docket 0417, order for hearing regarding inaccuracies in Analyze Boston's Crime Incident Report Dataset.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Andrea Campbell, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Chair Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice held a hearing to review inaccuracies in the Police Department's crime data that is publicly available through Analyze Boston. We were joined by panelists from the Police Department, DOIT, and Citizens for Juvenile Justice in the ACLU. I want to thank Counselors Flaherty, Bach, Asabi George, Mejia, and Flynn for joining the conversation. We discussed issues with the data, duplicates that exist in the data, data sets that have changed daily from years prior, a change in the categorization of incidents, including the removal and consolidation of a substantial amount of offense descriptions into increasingly ambiguous categories, which makes it difficult to effectively and accurately analyze the data. I thank the community-based organizations, especially CFJJ, for bringing this information to the attention of the Committee. I also thanked, of course, the Administration for showing up and participating in the hearing and discussion. We discussed ways not just to fix the inaccuracies and to improve the data. We also discussed ways to increase transparency and facilitate the access to this critical BPD data. And that means, of course, making the data clearer. The average person that looks at Analyze Boston, we wouldn't know what they were looking at. So we talked about ways in which the department could work with community-based organizations to be able to analyze that data and to put forth trends or other top lines where a layperson could understand that information, regardless of the language barriers or educational barriers. And I want to thank Counselor Mejia specifically on the latter two points. The Boston Police Department is currently working with DOIT. They have taken down this data and all of this information. So it's not currently publicly available. We're working really quickly to remove the duplication in the data. The department is also checking in with the vendor to see if they can get this information back online quickly, expand the categories so they are more detailed in terms of the offenses in which we are arresting folks or stopping them, which is critically important. We also discussed ways the Police Department could be proactive in releasing this data information beyond investigations, including traffic stops, stop-and-frisk data, budget numbers, diversity demographics, other important information, which, of course, I will continue to push the department to do. Advocates as well spoke to the importance of making sure that the data we release consistently includes race and age and other relevant demographic information, the location of data, to allow folks to have a greater level of analysis. The ACLU, which manages its own dataset based on information pulled from Analyze Boston, along with CFJJ and many others who participated, also spoke to being open, to joining an advisory group of some sort, also suggested by Counselor Mejia, as a way in which to help BPD not just put out this information, but support our department in analyzing the information and making it available, and of course, then being more impactful in the solutions we put forward in policing in the city of Boston. Lastly, I'll just say we heard some very powerful public testimony from Abigail Forrester, who is the Executive Director of Teen Empowerment, who named the trauma our young people are experiencing with police in the community. And obviously, this is also with the backdrop of what's happening nationally, and the importance of building relationship between our young people and our officers, but not just our community service officers. More officers, folks in the gang unit, units that are often not actually in a community relationship stance. How do we sort of pull folks out of these units and into some relationship-building exercises, particularly with our youth during this critical time? Very powerful hearing. This docket will remain in committee, and we will, of course, continue the conversation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Chair Campbell. Seeing no further discussion on docket 0417, it shall remain in the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Madam Clerk, would you please read together docket 0453 through 0456, as well as docket 0472?
Certainly. Docket 0453, message and order authorized in the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $17,421,783 in the form of a grant for the federal FY21 Community Development Block Grant, known as CDBG, awarded by the United States Department to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Development. The grant will fund community and economic development programs. Docket number 0454, message and order authorized in the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $5,959,142 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Home Investment Partnerships, awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Development. The grant will fund the creation of affordable housing units and nonprofits and for-profit developers. Docket number 0455, message and order authorized in the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $3,248,220 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Housing for Persons with AIDS, known as HOPWA, awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Development. The grant will fund rental assistance and services for persons with HIV/AIDS. Docket 0456, message and order authorized in the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $1,487,124 in the form of a grant from the federal FY21 Emergency Solutions Grant, awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to be administered by Neighborhood Development. The grant will fund housing stability and prevention for homelessness. Docket 0472, message and order authorized in the city of Boston to apply for, accept and extend for federal fiscal year 2020 Continuum of Care Grant from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount not to exceed $38,685,686. These funds will be used to support programs that provide services and housing for the homeless.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Chair now recognizes Counselor Lydia Edwards, the Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Counselor Edwards will be moving for acceptance of the Committee report, and we will, of course, vote on these grants individually. But the Chair Edwards is going to speak on all of them at once. So, Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. We held a hearing just yesterday on various grants to fund community and economic development programs, the creation of affordable housing rental assistance and services for persons with HIV and AIDS, and the support programs that provide service and housing to the homeless. I was joined by my colleagues, Counselor Julia Mejia, Counselor Ed Flynn, Counselor Kenzie Bach, and Counselor Liz Braden, and Counselor Asabi George, excuse me. Joining us from the Administration are Tim Davis, Deputy Director of Planning at DND, Trin Nguyen, Director of Workforce Development, Jessica Boatright from DND, Katie Ford, Acting Deputy Director of the Office of Housing Stability, Jim Green from the Homelessness Prevention from DND, as well as Natalia Ortube from the Economic Development Small Business Division. Each of the grants, as described, are in the millions, tens of millions of dollars. And all of them are continuing funding of grants that we annually receive from the federal government. I just want to quickly note there was a slight increase in the amounts given to us from the federal government. This was to compensate for the fair market rent increases and for some youth programs. We had a thorough discussion about what some of those programs are. Also, looking at data points, Counselor Flynn asked for several points, including looking at ways in which South Boston and neighborhood breakdowns were going to get some of the federal money. Essentially, this was, we also discussed training programs and for lab and life sciences throughout our neighborhoods. Again, as CDBG and job training is part of this grant program monies. Ultimately, I, as you had stated before, will move, am moving to suspend and pass all of these dockets to allow for DND, OED, and others to continue their great work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Edwards. Any further discussion on dockets 453 through 456, as well as 472? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, we're going to begin with docket 0453, which Chair is asking for acceptance of the Committee report. This is the $17 million grant for CDBG. Would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket number 0453, Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0453 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving along to 0454, this is a just-under-six-million-dollar grant for the FY21 Home Investment Partnerships. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Docket 0454, Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. President, docket number 0454 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. 0455, this is the $3.2 million grant, HOPWA grant. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Docket 0455, Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Asavi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0455 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to 0456, this is the one point just under $5 million Emergency Solutions Grant. Please call the roll.
Docket 0456, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Brayden.
Yes.
Counselor Brayden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asavi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asavi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes. Sorry, I'm missing out on some. I apologize.
No, not a problem. Counselor Wu, yes?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0456 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Finally, docket 0472, this is the $38.6 million Continuum of Care Grant from Department of Housing and Urban Development. Would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket 0472, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Brayden.
Yes.
Counselor Brayden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asavi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asavi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0472 has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Moving right along to motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0562 in place before the body?
Thank you. Docket 0562, Counselor Arroyo offered the following petition for special law regarding an act providing certain retirement benefits for the widow of a former firefighter in the city of Boston.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the District Council from Hyde Park, Counselor Arroyo. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a home rule petition for a former firefighter named Leroy Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez served the city of Boston ably and with distinction as a Boston firefighter for many years. Unfortunately, in July of 2019, responding to a fire, July 1st of 2019, responding to a fire, Mr. Rodriguez blew out his Achilles. It required surgery, and when he went to receive surgery for this injury that he sustained responding to this fire, he passed away on the operation table. Unfortunately, when that happened, they did give him full honors as an officer, as a firefighter who had passed away in the line of duty. However, when it came to his benefits for his widow and his child, he was given Section 9 instead of Section 100. Section 100 is reserved for injuries sustained that lead to death while in the line of duty. This Achilles injury that led to that surgery that then led to his death, I believe should qualify for that. I believe his widow should receive all due benefits, as well as his child. And so, this is a home rule petition to set that right and make his family as whole as possible in honor of Mr. Rodriguez's service to this city and the fact that he did give his life in the care of this city and in carrying out his responsibilities as a Boston firefighter. And so, I am hoping we can do this and we can set this right. That's what, you know, I assume is something that hopefully should not be that difficult of a lift. I'm happy to answer any questions on this. I know that our local firefighter union is happy to answer any questions on this as well, but I look forward to making her as whole as we can, considering the loss of her husband and her child's father. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. The Chair now recognizes the archcouncil from South Boston, Counselor Flaherty. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know the firefighter, I'm aware of the situation, and please add my name.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please add Counselor Michael Flaherty. Chair now recognizes the district council from South Boston, Counselor Flynn. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say thank you to my colleague, Counselor Arroyo, for bringing this important issue forward. Please add my name, and it's dedicated, it's a dedicated firefighter like this and his family that really are the unsung heroes in our city, and we need to do everything we can to make sure that they're treated fairly and their families are treated fairly with respect. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor Arroyo.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Ed Flynn. Any further discussion on docket 0562? Would any counselors wish to add their name to docket 0562? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Asavi George. Please add Counselor Brayden. Please add Counselor Wu. Please add Counselor Bach. Please add Counselor Campbell. Please add the Chair's name. And docket 0562 shall be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Moving right along, Madam Clerk, would you please read in place before the body, docket 0563?
Thank you. Docket 0563, Counselor Arroyo offered the following resolution, supporting bills asserting Puerto Rico's right to self-determination, House Bill 2070 and Senate Bill 865.
Thank you very much. The Chair now recognizes the district council from Hyde Park, Counselor Arroyo. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As many of my colleagues know, I am Puerto Rican. My parents, former City Councilor Felix Di Arroyo, also, that's their home. It's somewhere I visit often with my family. And for folks who are less aware of the historical context of Puerto Rico, Puerto Ricans have the rights of citizenship. They were ceded over by Spain in 1898 after the Spanish-American War, and since 1917 have enjoyed the rights of citizenship without the ability to vote in a presidential election, however, or send members to Congress or the Senate, however, they do partake in a presidential primary. In terms of what this is, on March 18th of 2021, Puerto Rican representatives Nidia Velazquez and Alexander Ocasio-Cortez submitted, introduced HR 2070, and were joined by Senator Bob Menendez with Senate Resolution 865, which recognizes the right of the people of Puerto Rico to call a status convention through which people would exercise their natural right to self-determination and to establish a mechanism for congressional consideration of such decision and for other purposes. What those two things would do is empower Puerto Ricans to determine their own political identity and future by recognizing that they should have the ability to democratically decide the process, participate in deliberations, and make the final determination, the Puerto Rican people, over the political status of the island. For folks who don't understand, Puerto Rico is currently managed by Congress. They do not have the right to make these determinations without this being done. They are, for all intents and purposes, in colonial status. This would give them the right to form their own state mechanisms to decide and determine their own future. It does not take a stance whether or not they should be a state, whether or not they should continue as they are, or whether or not they should be a free association or a free country. What it says is that the Puerto Rican legislature and the Puerto Rican people should be able to create their own mechanisms to make those decisions themselves, and we should honor their ability to do that. I believe this is a strong motion in terms of the bills in the Senate and in the Congress to give democratic ideals truth, to allow Puerto Ricans to make this decision. And for folks, in terms of just why this would be relevant for us, Boston is home to approximately 30,506 Puerto Ricans, representing the largest population, part of the Latino population in the city of Boston. That's 28% of the Latino population. This country is home to, by 2015 census, 5.3 million Puerto Ricans, and most lately, most recently, with Hurricane Maria, those numbers have certainly gone up, and we've certainly seen what the issues with their current status have caused, considering the aid and the way in which they were treated during that by the previous administration. And so, I hope that you can stand with me. I'm seeking to suspend and pass so that we can vote for this resolution, to stand with both our Congresswoman, Ayanna Pressley, who is a sponsor of the congressional one, and both of our senators, Ed Markey and Elizabeth Warren, who are cosponsors of the bill in the Senate. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. And I believe there may have been an error on the original resolution. Is it correct that you're seeking suspension or substitute language?
Yes, thank you for the reminder. I am seeking substitute language. The error is in the first whereas, where unfortunately we wrote 1989, the Treaty of Paris, but it was 1898, and so I caught that today, and so the new version has corrected that one date. That's the only change.
So, given the fact that the substitution of language is technical in nature, it does not need to be voted on, seeing no discussion on the substituted language, it is hereby accepted. It is docket 563, which is now before the body. The Chair now recognizes the district council from South Boston, Counselor Flynn. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counselor Arroyo for bringing this important information to the body. Mr. President, please add my name as Counselor Arroyo mentioned. Boston is also home to a large Puerto Rican community. In my district in the South End, I have a large Puerto Rican community. I'm honored and proud to represent them. And just as a little bit of background, Mr. President, I had the opportunity to serve for a year at Joint Task Force Guantanamo, and when I served there, I served with the Puerto Rican Army National Guard and the U.S. Virgin Islands National Guard. They were on active duty there with me. I became friends with a lot of Puerto Rican soldiers, and I loved listening to the stories about their home and their love of our country, and they're Americans, and they deserve every opportunity like we do, and one of those opportunities is letting them decide for themselves what is in their best interest of their government structure in Puerto Rico. So, again, want to say thank you to Counselor Arroyo for this important piece of information that he's bringing forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Ed Flynn is a cosponsor, seeing no further discussion on docket 0563. Would any counselors wish to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Michael Flaherty. Please add Counselor Asavi George. Please add Counselor Edwards. Please add Counselor Brayden. Please add Counselor Mejia. Please add Counselor Bach. Please add Counselor Wu. Please add Counselor Campbell. Please add the Chair. Counselor Arroyo seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 563. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0563, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Brayden.
Yes.
Counselor Brayden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asavi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asavi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0563 has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please read in place before the body, docket 0564.
Thank you. Docket 0564, Councilors Arroyo and Flynn offer the following resolution, recognizing the 65th Infantry Regiment and the Puerto Rican Veterans Monument Square Association, Inc.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair now recognizes the district council from Hyde Park. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Counselor Flynn, both for his service and his attention to these, to veterans and honoring their experiences. The 65th Infantry was a unit of Puerto, it's a Puerto Rican regiment of the United States Army. It was segregated for many, many years as an all Hispanic unit. They served with distinction since 1899. The, I believe, the only monument to the 65th Infantry in the entire continental United States is home to, is home in South End, Counselor Flynn's district, and Boston has done right by the 65th Infantry in ensuring that their sacrifices, they've served in multiple wars, most notably in Korea, and we've had many veterans who were discriminated while serving in the military in the 65th, not just in a segregated unit, not just by that, but also by having leadership that both tormented, disgraced their own uniforms and ensured that the folks during that period in time did not receive the respect that they deserved. And so, this is a resolution to put that right, to ensure that we give them the respect and the honor that they deserve for serving this country with distinction. And just to be clear, they knew this was going to be a segregated unit. They knew that this was going to be a discriminatory experience, but they did it because they believe in this country, because they believe in the ideals of what this country could be, and I think that is a beautiful, beautiful thing that they did. And so, this is a way of honoring them, showing them that the faith that they had in the best parts of this country are real, that what they gave their lives for some is real, is a sacrifice we respect and we honor. And so, it is with great pride that I offer this resolution today, and I seek to suspend and pass. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Chair now recognizes the cosponsor, the district council from South Boston, Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and again, thank you to Counselor Arroyo for including me on this important resolution, as we recognize the tremendous contribution, service, sacrifice of the 65th Infantry in the Puerto Rican Veterans Monument Square Association as well. Counselor Arroyo mentioned it perfectly, that the 65th Infantry, it's an all Hispanic segregated unit in America, military history, and they served our country heroically, even as they faced discrimination and racism, played a critical role in the Korean War. It's often referred to as the forgotten war. The Puerto Rican Veterans Memorial in the South End is the first public memorial, as Counsel Arroyo mentioned, dedicated to the Puerto Rican veterans in the 65th, and I don't think I've missed an event since I've been a city councilor. And what's interesting about the memorial is they also have a woman veteran that's also part of the memorial, and we were there last weekend, myself, Ricardo, and Counselor Wu, and Senator Sonia Chang Diaz, and John Santiago, but, you know, Senator Sonia Chang Diaz was talking about the women veterans, that they're often overlooked in society, and I certainly agree with her. But I believe it's important to recognize the work of our Puerto Rican veterans, because they represent the contributions of our Hispanic and Latinx residents who have done so much for our country, even as our country didn't treat them well, whether it's in this city or New York or other areas around the country. So, I'm glad to co-sponsor this resolution to celebrate them, celebrate their families in their service and sacrifice. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Flynn. Chair now recognizes the archcouncil from Rosedale. Counselor Wu, the floor is yours.
Very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to offer gratitude to the sponsors and just to, once again, lift up the incredible leadership and persistent advocacy of so many community members to, I hear you, Counselor Arroyo, right next door, tuning in to the topic, in making sure that Boston has led the way. We are, I'm so proud to serve alongside Counselor Arroyo on this council and to see his leadership now reflecting so much of the community's efforts for decades at this point. I was proud to serve on the board along with the veterans to ensure that this monument went from an idea to a plaque to a statue and now a whole plaza, and it's just an incredible gathering space for community in addition to the physical representation and symbol of how much we remember and how much we honor their sacrifices. So, so grateful to be linked to and connected with these very, very special leaders in our community, and very thankful that the council's taking this action today. Please add my name.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Please add Counselor Wu's name. Seeing any further discussion? Any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Asavi George, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Brayden, Counselor Bach, Counselor Campbell, Counselor O'Malley, and Counselors Arroyo and Flynn. Excuse me, please add Counselor Julia Mejia. Please add, please make sure you add a Counselor Mejia. And Counselors Arroyo and Flynn are now moving for suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0564. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0564, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Brayden.
Yes.
Counselor Brayden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabby George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabby George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0564 has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Congratulations to the sponsors. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket in place before the body, docket 0565?
Docket 0565. Counselor Campbell offered the following order for hearing regarding a local truth and reconciliation commission.
Thank you very much. Chair now recognizes the district council from Matapan. Counselor Andre Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Telling myself not to get emotional with this one. As my team member CJ recently remarked, and I wholeheartedly agree with him, "Sometimes I don't have the words. The disrespect of Black bodies is continuous and atrocious," he said. "It never ends. It is painful, exhausting, and infuriating." Yet again, we must add another name to a long list of unarmed Black men murdered in our country, Dante Ray. And sadly, there are so many names that we don't know about. I have said many times that it's a mistake to think or suggest that Boston is different from Minneapolis and to pretend like this doesn't or couldn't happen here. We have our own devastating racial disparities in policing that tell us Black residents are disproportionately stopped by police. We make up a quarter of the city's population, yet close to 70% of its stop and frisk cases. Nationwide, Black people are disproportionately shot by police, even though we only make up a third, 13% of the population, who are twice as likely to be killed by police. The fear is real, and Black people have a reason to resist, because as my uncle likes to say, "I refuse to let myself be set up to be killed." Boston has its own long and painful history of racism, discrimination, and exclusion. And while policing may be the most obvious example, it is far from the only system we have to address when it comes to eradicating racial disparities. Our city has had redlining, blockbusting, discrimination, and displacement in the housing industry, discriminatory and exclusionary banking practices, racial segregation in our schools, busing, generational health disparities, and environmental injustices. And we know from significant data and personal stories of people of color and immigrants in the city of Boston that they continue to experience and suffer the impacts of these racist policies. We see it in the racial wealth gap, the student achievement gaps, mass incarceration, in neighborhoods that continue to experience generational poverty, violence, trauma, and inequity. This history has and continues to erode trust between institutions and its residents, especially residents in government. This history continues to perpetuate stereotypes and division between residents and neighbors. This history becomes more cemented in adults and passes on to our children the longer we wait to address it. At what point will we take the meaningful action to eradicate systemic and racial inequities? If not now, then when? As our district attorney Rollins and other municipalities around this country have begun to localize a process for truth and reconciliation, I look to do the same here in the city of Boston, building upon frankly the work of this council and community leaders and residents, frankly, who have done this work around the country and who are blessed to live right here in the city of Boston. This hearing is designed to discuss establishing a commission with an initial focus that, with initial focus of starting with the truth, the truth about the problem, the elephant in the room, the root of the inequities that like tree branches continue to grow in our city, pushing all of us to take off our blinders and to acknowledge and understand a fact that racism is real. It is a system that continues to wreak havoc on our residents' experience in our city and absolutely limits the potential of our city as a result. And the second part, which cannot happen without the former, is about healing and repairing. A truth and reconciliation commission would provide Boston with an opportunity to do this work while intentionally building trust in working relationships across a wide range of diverse communities and stakeholders, providing a space for truth and reconciliation commission models to be explored, along with seeing what residents envision for a model here in the city of Boston. It provides us with an opportunity to restore relationships, for harms to be acknowledged and addressed, and what outcomes from a restorative process could include, both short term and long term, including action steps such as public apologies, corrections of historic and official historical records, memorials to the fallen, building renaming, legislative policy and budgetary actions, reparations, and so much more. I think this conversation and commission is beyond timely. We have an opportunity in Boston to do the work of confronting our history, healing from it, and eradicating the inequities that persist in our city because of that history. I look forward to working with each and every one of you on this council, along with, of course, community-based organizations, residents, and community leaders who have been doing this work in many respects for a really long time. And as one of those community leaders recently remarked, she thinks it's quite timely, given the conversations that a whole host of individuals are having right now in the city of Boston, and I hope each and every one of you will join me in the work. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Campbell. Any further discussion on docket 0565? The chair now recognizes the district council from Austin-Brighton. Counselor Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to rise in support of Counselor Campbell's initiative in proposing this truth and reconciliation commission. I come from Northern Ireland, which has a long, long history of sectarian violence between people who profess different, different branches of the Christian community, but we have a long history of violence. And I often say in Northern Ireland that we are prisoners of our history. And unless we dig deep and pull it out from under the woodpile and look at it and address the hurt and the damage that has been done, we won't be able to heal and we won't be able to move forward. I have to say, the situation in Ireland is not the same as the long history of systemic racism in the United States. There are some similarities, but I know myself that I carry that responsibility with me to say that we have to find a different way, we have to find a new way to rebuild relationships, to try and heal the wounds, very deep wounds, and move and build a better, more just and equitable future for all Bostonians, a future that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Braden. I assume you'd like your name added as well?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please add Counselor Liz Braden as a co-sponsor. Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to add my name in support of this hearing order, and I also just kind of want to offer that when we think about the healing that we need to do here in the city of Boston, I always reflect back on my own journey, coming to this country at a time when there was all time, a lot of tension, racial tension in particular, the busing era, and the whole sentiment that I needed to go back to where I came from. And that still carries into a lot of spaces that I feel that sometimes we walk into, and I think that if we're really serious about moving the conversation forward, it's going to take a lot of heart work, not hard work, but hearts. And changing the minds and hearts of people is the hardest thing to do. But I do believe that if Boston, through this effort, if Boston can really get it right, if we can heal past these wounds, these, and I'm already seeing it over the last few years in being on the council, is that there's so much division about everything that exists here in the city of Boston when it comes to education, when it comes to policing, when it comes to all systems that have been created here, there seems to always be that point of tension. And the only way we're going to move forward is if we have honest, heart-to-heart conversations that are action-oriented, that we walk out of these conversations with a clear pathway out, and that it's something that people feel that they're engaged, whether they come kicking and screaming, but everybody, everybody has to be part of the dialogue, because that's the only way this is going to work. So I am very proud of Counselor Campbell's hearing order and happy to not just join, but would love to really help bring people across our differences together, because our children are watching us, and how we show up and when we don't show up shows how really ready we are to do the real work that is required to move this city forward. So I'm here for all of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Julia Mejia as a co-sponsor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would any counselors wish to add their name as a co-sponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo. Please add Counselor Sabby George. Please add Counselor Edwards. Please add Counselor Bach. Please add Counselor Wu. Please add Counselor Flynn. Please add the chair's name. Please add Counselor Flaherty. And docket 0565 shall be referred to the Committee on Civil Rights. Madam Clerk, would you please read in place before the body, docket 0566?
Certainly. Docket 0566. Counselors Baker and Campbell offer the following resolution designating a memorial hero square at the intersection of Center Street and Adams Street in Dorchester in memory of Sergeant Wilson Francis Dalton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the district council from Matapan. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I also want to thank Counselor Baker and hope he's feeling better. This is very much on behalf of both of us, and the resident's family is actually from his district, so I do want to give Counselor Baker credit as well and thank him for the partnership. I'm proud to present this resolution on behalf of both of us. We've been working with the Office of Veteran Affairs, and kudos to that office for the incredible work they do every single day. But we've been working with them in the process of designating a memorial hero square at the intersection of Center Street and Adams Street in Dorchester in the memory and honor of Sergeant Wilson Francis Dalton for his service and his sacrifice. Sergeant Dalton was born on October 24, 1914, in Dorchester. He began active duty in the U.S. Army in 1943 during World War II and served in the 66th Infantry Division and the 262nd Infantry Regiment. He died honorably in action on December 25, 1944. He was announced missing in action and presumed dead after the sinking of the USS Letupole Bill, and he died in action on December 25, 1944. I ask that my colleagues join me in supporting this resolution, and not just adding your name, but also just taking a moment to reflect on his service, the sacrifice, and of course, his family. We know that when our men and women go into service, Counselor Flynn, of course, speaks to this so eloquently, as does Counselor Edwards, they bring their families with them. So really look forward to your partnership with respect to passing this resolution and ask for a suspension of the rules and passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Campbell. Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you. I don't have a need to speak. That must have been a mistake.
Okay. Perhaps, I think the hand was raised from earlier, so thank you, Counselor Mejia. Seeing any further discussion on docket 566? Would any counselors wish to add their name to dockets 566? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Julia Mejia. Please add Counselor Michael Flaherty. Please add Counselor Lydia Edwards. Please add Counselor Nisa Sabby George. Please add Counselor Ricardo Arroyo. Please add Counselor Kenzie Bach. Please add Counselor Liz Braden. Please add Counselor Ed Flynn. Please add Counselor Michelle Wu. Please add the chair's name. And Counselor Campbell and Counselor Baker in abstentia seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0566. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0566. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabby George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabby George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0566 has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and congratulations, Counselor Campbell. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0567.
Docket 0567. Counselor Edwards offer the following order for hearing regarding biannual review of the Boston Employment Commission and Boston residents' job policy.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the district council from East Boston. Counselor Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. This is just again a hearing order for the, in compliance with the executive order from Mayor, or former Mayor Walsh. In 2017, he actually called for an increase in the percentages of people of color, of residents of Boston and of women, and that in the same executive order that we would have annual hearings in April and in October to make sure we're monitoring the success of that executive order. So this is again calling for that hearing to happen in April. And then, of course, we, I would hope the same hearing order could call for it to be where we could schedule for April and October, just to go ahead and do both, to make sure that we are on, in compliance with the executive order. Throughout the many hearings, I think we've had four or five so far, we've learned about lack of disciplinary action, but also new initiatives to help contractors get training. We've noticed an increase in the amount of folks, people of color especially, getting access to construction jobs and also on city projects. We've seen an increase or stability really of women, and we've definitely seen an increase in terms of Boston residents. So this is a, this is something that we, is part of our, our jobs as city counselors to make sure that we are being stewards financially, but also moral, morally centered in our fight to ensure that all Bostonians have access to the future and to the finances of the city of Boston.
Thank you very much, Counselor Edwards. Any further discussion on docket 567? Seeing none, would any counselors wish to add their name as a co-sponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Sabby George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Bach, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Wu, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Mejia. Please add the chair's name. Counselor Braden. And docket 0567 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0568.
Docket 0568. Counselor Edwards offer the following resolution, calling for safer signature collection laws governing candidates seeking elective office.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the district council from East Boston. Counselor Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I wanted to make sure that we called this out and hopefully earned the support of my colleagues to at least acknowledge that while we have canceled the special election because of concerns of safety, there's still an aspect of campaigning that also we need to at least acknowledge could not be as safe, and call on the State House and possibly the Secretary of State to come up with a safer option. That's why I've introduced this resolution. I'll speak specifically about my neighborhood. For example, East Boston's weekly COVID-19 positive test rate increased another 10%. That's, that's actually after reporting a 20% increase only three weeks ago. We are possibly in the middle of a surge while we are getting vaccinated, and I think that's great, and this is not at all a knock to the incredible efforts of grassroots individuals and the city of Boston and the state to try and make sure we are getting vaccinated. It's just acknowledging the reality that we're in. In-person signatures in public settings, close proximity, sharing the same writing utensils, I'm concerned. And I just think that there may be a way, at least the State House was able to come up with that way, that they did electronic signatures for themselves, they reduced the number required, they allowed for, and I'm suggesting we also allow for people to sign more than one nomination packet, so that their signatures count for more than one person, or more than one candidate. These are things that I'm hoping that the State House or the Secretary of State would be willing to act on or at least push for. These are, I don't think these are wildly obscene things to ask, or in a moment where we are trying to be as safe as possible. But we have at least six people possibly running for mayor, at least. I have no idea how many people will be running for at-large, and of course, each one of us that is planning to return back to city council will also be going out there. So I'm calling for safer versions. I'm calling for creativity in this moment, and I hope my colleagues will call with me. I understand that it would be hard to change right now the rules and obligations legislatively, hard but not impossible. I understand that some people may be concerned that we are trying to change the standards right after this. So I thought the balanced way to do that is to call it out publicly, to acknowledge and to see this, and hopefully we can come up with ways, and all of us can share them, the safest way to gather signatures, to make sure that we continue to be as democratic as possible, but as also safe as possible. So I'm calling for this resolution, for safer signature gathering, and I'd hope, I would like to suspend the rules and hopefully pass.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. I am taking over. I am back. Thank you, Counselor Edwards. I am taking over. I am back. I'm taking over, Mr. President, because I think he would like to say a few words on this docket. Counselor O'Malley? Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's like riding a bike, right? You never forget? Just very, very briefly, wanted to acknowledge the leadership and the partnership in this work with Counselor Edwards. I could not agree with her more strongly. I recognize the fact that I am perhaps the only elected official on this Zoom who did not sign up for nomination papers yesterday. But nevertheless, I was scrolling through Facebook memories, and it was a year ago this week where I introduced, in great partnership with Counselor Edwards, a hearing order on safe election practices as it relates to the pandemic. And my God, if any of us thought that we would still be in this situation now, a year later, no one would believe it. So the fact of the matter is, is that we have a responsibility to do this safe, to do this right, even if it means changing the rules so that the barriers for running for office and serving in office are addressed. It's not only for the safety of us, for our teams, for our volunteer, our loyal volunteer base, but it's for the people of Boston as well. Many of you know, the best practice I ever received for being a city elected official was bagging groceries at Roach Brothers supermarkets in West Roxbury. It was also a location where I would see, including, I think I was bagging groceries from Counselor Flaherty once, at an early run in his day. It is just throngs of individuals who go to collect. It's a wonderful experience. It's one of the things I love best about this city. But it's not safe to do so now, and it's going to seriously potentially harm individuals, but more than that, make people feel uneasy about the whole process. So we need to make it as easy and as safe as humanly possible to make sure that we conduct as robust an election process as possible. And obviously, that means vote by mail, early vote, no-excuse vote by mail, all of those things. Before we even get to that point, to address the nomination signature collection is an important, significant step. So I just commend Counselor Edwards. Ask that my name be added. Look forward to the work in this space. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, please sign my name to the resolution. And I think it's a great discussion for us to have. I'm wondering to the sponsor, are we, is this something that we would discuss in a, I know, in a hearing order eventually, or some type of formal discussion? I agree with it that we could consider other options other than getting a physical signature. But I'm not, I know Counselor Edwards mentioned that it may not take place this year. So I'm just trying to figure out what some of the timing might be, and if there was a hearing order, if there was an opportunity for us to talk in whether it's government ops or basic city services, what the next step is if we did, if we did this. So just wanted to ask a couple of questions. But again, I'm glad to sign on it. And I think it's an excellent, excellent proposal. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Flynn, and then Counselor Edwards, if you want to respond to, Counselor Flynn?
Counselor Flynn, is your question that I make this a hearing order rather than a resolution? Would you prefer that?
No, I would just, I'm just wondering, would it apply this year, Counselor Edwards, or would we keep it open that that's a possibility, or it might not be this year, but it might be another time? I'm just trying to think of the timing.
So the, this resolution would, the call out would be right now. That being said, if we were to have a conversation, which we can have regardless of whether we have a hearing or whatever, what would have to apply would have to be a home rule petition or some sort of legislative act that would have to happen and go through committee and then get up to the State House. And I don't think we have the time right now. I don't know that we could. I mean, we got lucky one time, unanimous, we were unanimous, State House moved two weeks. I think that's, I think we're good for the decade. No offense to State House, but I don't know that we're going to get that. I would love to have been able to possibly get two, one year and two weeks. I'm looking at all the smiles on the screens, and the chances are very unlikely. But I am open to, if you think it would be more efficient and at least better for us to have a discussion, and if the, if President Pro, excuse me, if President Pro Temp would allow for me to make this a discussion or have this resolution be committed to committee, where we can have it submitted to my Committee of Government Ops, and we can have a further, longer discussion where we can be as creative as possible about what's safe and what's not safe. I would invite, of course, all candidates in this body and out of this body who is trying to be part of this body to have that conversation. I can't imagine every city, every city is probably wondering how they're doing this, because all municipal elections are happening right now. I know that Boston, Counselor Bach informed me, Boston has one of the highest signature gathering requirements of any city. So I'm happy to, if you, instead of maybe a suspend and pass, we can go to a conversation, commit the resolution to committee. I still hope my colleagues would sign their names and showing support in this. But I do think it's really important that we think about this. Again, I mentioned, you know, I would, my first thought is to go to Shaw's in East Boston. But I just told you the rates of East Boston. They're up 10%, which is over 20, which is up even more than the 20% it went up already for COVID induction rates. So, sorry, it's a long answer.
No, it's fine. Counselor Flynn?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Counselor Edwards. You answered my question. I also agree, after listening to your response, that we should do a suspended pass. You provided excellent background information on it. So thank you, thank you, Counselor Edwards for, for your explanation. And I also agree to suspend and pass. I think that's, that's the best route after, after listening to your explanation. Thank you, Counselor Edwards, and thank you, Madam, Madam President, also.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Counselor Royal?
Thank you. And thank you to Counselor Edwards for bringing this forward. I support this wholeheartedly. Not only do we have one of the highest thresholds, we actually have one of the shortest timeframes to meet that threshold, I believe, in the state. And it's particularly bad for our, my colleagues who are running at-large. And in the mayoral race, I believe we have, that's actually the highest signature requirement in the entire state, with the shortest amount of timeframe for that same situation. And so this is sort of an emergency-level thing to me. I think, you know, we want to have people engage in our democratic processes as safely as possible. We just did this. The state was required by lawsuit to do this in the last go-round of elections. And so folks who won those county ballots and on those statewide ballots, Boston just did this. Our Boston Election Department, for instance, just did this in terms of online signatures. I believe they halved it to 50%. They did a number of measures that I honestly think we could probably very easily, those systems already set up, could probably very easily be created again and likely should be. I don't know if we've spoken to the Election Department here about whether or not they support or don't support this specifically, but I would, I would be surprised if they didn't support this, because the fact of the matter is, a lot of us value our civic participation, our volunteers, our residents. And if we're putting them in a situation that they're uncomfortable with, or that could lead to unhealthy results for them or the people they're speaking to, that doesn't sit right with me. Nor does it sit right with me that, you know, we have less participation in public right now. I know we're getting closer and closer to normal, or whatever that is. But more folks are staying at home. And so you have less people out and about to sign these papers in the first place. And so you're, you're creating a relatively, I think, unsafe situation, where we have, I think, something like 28 or 30 people signed up for nomination papers yesterday. More will be signing up today. That's a number of candidates spread out around the city of Boston with their volunteers spread out over the city of Boston, speaking to multiple constituents and residents. And I just think if there's a way we can make that process safer, we should do it. This is a no-brainer to me. I know we might have used up our one State House in a decade, two decades, whatever that was. I don't know if I've ever seen that unanimous sort of support. But my hope is that they would join us in doing this in a substantive way, because I know that they have to okay that. And so add my name. Thank you to the maker on this. And I look forward to having a continued conversation as we go on. Obviously, this is a resolution, but a continued conversation as we go on about ways in which we can make voting access easier and safer and healthier, both for democracy and for residents' physical, actual health. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Royal. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Royal's name. Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Mahia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I also wanted to add my name and the chorus of support to this resolution and to thank Counselor Edwards for bringing it to us. I echo the sentiments that we've heard. I also want to just add and be super mindful that, you know, on April 27, these nomination papers are going to be ready for us to pick up and distribute. So in terms of timelining and getting this passed or whatever's going to happen, I'm hoping that we could really think about the, you know, how quickly we can expedite this process in terms of getting it approved along the way business works here. And then the other piece that I wanted to just, I did speak with, briefly with Sabino from the Elections Department yesterday, and he mentioned that something similar, something like this will potentially impact September 14, the 21st. I guess they're trying to change the date of the election. And so just kind of want to bring that into the space. I think regardless of what that impact looks like, I do believe that Counselor Edwards, this is something that we definitely need to approve now and today and make it viable for us.
Thank you very much, Counselor Mahia. Seeing no further discussion on this, would any other counselors wish to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Braden. Please add Counselor Saby George. Please add Counselor Bach. Please add Counselor Campbell. We add Counselor Mahia. Please add the Chair's name, as I believe has been added as well. And just so I'm clear, and I'm looking for you, the author for guides, we will, you are moving for suspension of the rules and adoption today, but perhaps going forward, there could be some continued work in this space. Is that correct, Counselor Edwards?
Yes. Counselor O'Malley, I think what I'm hearing is that we, we need to get together and have the further conversation we firmly support, but we need to think about how creative we can be. And maybe there is time to think of something that the State House can act on. Just to answer, Counselor O'Malley, I was gonna, I was gonna say, O'Arroyo. So that's where I'm so, I'm so sorry. But to Counselor Arroyo's note, in discussing this with some advocates who had also thought about this idea, the Elections Department believed that they needed additional legislative authority for this year, as last year was, and the court opinion was for particularly last year's situation. And then, of course, you know, we had the recent special election in Revere, where someone didn't have enough signatures. They claimed that we were still in a pandemic, and the court seemed to be disagreeing and saying things had changed. So we need legislative action. And again, we took our shot. We took our shot, and we got it the first time around. I don't know if we could do it this fast, but thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So Counselor Edwards is seeking suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0568. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0568, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Saby George.
Yes.
Counselor Saby George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu. Mr. President, docket number 0568 has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Counselor. Now moving on to personnel orders. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0569?
Certainly. Docket 0569, Counselor O'Malley for Counselor Bach.
Here, seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0569. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket 0569, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Saby George.
Yes.
Counselor Saby George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0569 passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please read docket 0570?
Certainly. Docket 0570, Counselor O'Malley offer the following order.
Suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0570. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Docket number 0570, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Saby George.
Yes.
Counselor Saby George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0570 passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Moving right along to docket 0571.
Thank you. Docket 0571, Counselor O'Malley for Counselor Mahia.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0571. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Docket 0571, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Excuse me. Counselor Saby George.
Yes.
Counselor Saby George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0571 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now moving on to late files. And I'm informed by the clerk that there are four late file matters. Madam Clerk, would you please place before the body the first late file matter?
Should we vote on cabinet four?
We most certainly should. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Apologies. These four late file matters, or at least three of them, the personnel one is not, is being sent to your email, email inboxes right now. So please check your emails. And thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now take a roll call to add these items to the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. To add late file matters, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Saby George.
Yes.
Counselor Saby George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, all the late file matters are properly before the body.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Would you please read the first late file matter into the record?
Certainly. But in the Boston City Council, April 13, 2021, Counselor O'Malley for Counselor Mahia.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. First late file matter, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Saby George.
Yes.
Counselor Saby George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, the first late file matter was passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So the first late file matter, which I neglected to mention, was personnel matter, was just passed unanimously. Would you please read the second late file matter and place it before the body?
Thank you. Frank Baker, Boston City Council, District 3, April 14th, 2021. Dear President Pro Tempore O'Malley, please be advised that I will not be in attendance at the Boston City Council meeting on Wednesday, April 14th, 2021. Sincerely, Frank Baker, Boston City Council, District 3.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The second late file matter, which is a communication from our colleague, will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, would you please place before the body the third late file matter?
Third late file matter is offered by Councillors Michael Flaherty and Counselor Ed Flynn. I'll read first and last, Mr. President.
First and last, please. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. In order for hearing to discuss the city's medical leave policy as it relates to COVID-19 and COVID-19 long haulers, whereas many of our city of Boston employees were deemed essential and continue to work throughout the course of the COVID-19 pandemic to ensure the delivery of city services and programs, therefore, whereas, as we continue to learn more about the long-term effects of COVID-19, and particularly as we learn about COVID-19 long haulers, it is critical that we have policies and procedures in place to adequately protect our employees who may require reasonable accommodations or additional leave policies. Therefore, be it ordered that the appropriate committee of Boston City Council holds a hearing to discuss the city of Boston medical leave policy and other related policies as it is related to COVID-19. Representatives from the Office of Human Resources, Office of Labor Relations, Disability Commission, Boston Public Health Commission, and Chief Financial Officer, and members of the public shall be invited to testify filed in the council on April 14th, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the at-large counselor from South Boston, Counsel Flaherty. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This hearing order is to discuss the city of Boston's medical leave policy as it relates to COVID-19 and probably more specifically, COVID-19 long haulers. My apologies to you and the members for a late file, given obviously the amount of agenda items we had today. But I came over the boards on Monday when I heard that the city was moving to terminate one of our essential city employees. Many of our Boston, city Boston employees were deemed essential and continued to work in person throughout the course of the pandemic to ensure the delivery of city services and programs. One in particular was the bridge attendant. Quite frankly, if he wasn't working, you know, Boston Harbor would have looked like the Suez Canal a couple of weeks ago. And that was to get food and medical supplies and fuel up to its final destination. And unfortunately, some employees did contract COVID-19 through exposure at their work and in compliance with federal, state, and local public health guidelines, followed the two-week quarantine protocols, and adhered to all other appropriate leave policies and procedures. Employees have reported experiencing a wide range of severity of symptoms, while some employees still experience long-term impacts from COVID that adversely impact their ability to return to work. I should note that today is the one-year anniversary of Jose Fontan's passing, one of 29-year veteran of the Boston Police Department who contracted COVID while on the job. It runs the gamut from folks being asymptomatic and maybe just having sort of the sniffles and some other minor symptoms to ultimately, we've seen folks on ventilators and some have passed away. My team has fielded calls from several dedicated employees experiencing long-term symptoms. They've given the medical term "long haulers," COVID-19 long haulers. So I cannot underscore how frustrating and stressful that has been for our employees, but more importantly, to be an elected leader and to learn that the city is moving forward with respect to terminations. They've cited siloed communications between the workers' comp division and HR. They've expressed frustration with being required to use all of their sick time, all of their vacation time, all of their personal days and comp days, basically to accommodate the mandatory quarantines. So I understand that we're learning more and more about COVID-19 each and every day as a city and clearly as a council and as the city's HR team and personnel, et cetera, labor relations, lots of moving parts here. But it is imperative that all of our workers have policies and procedures in place that make them whole and to adequately protect them if they are required to take additional leave policies and to have reasonable accommodations due to their illness that they contracted during the performance of their duties through no fault of their own. So I look forward to an expedited hearing on this matter and encourage all of my colleagues to sign on. You all probably have instances in your own respective districts and or constituents that have referenced these situations, but now that we've been dealing with COVID now for well over a year, the time has come for a number of city employees who have actually been out as long COVID-19 long haulers, and now the city's knocking on their door and they're having hearings to moving forward with termination. Unconscionable. Unconscionable. And so again, Mr. President and to my colleagues, I apologize for the late file, but I was absolutely over the top enraged and wanted to present this as a late file. Our colleague Counsel Flynn has signed on. He is well aware of that constituent, but I'm sure that that constituent is not alone feeling that their city is not standing with them as they battle the effects of COVID-19. And that's it in a nutshell. So at the appropriate time, where you assign the matter, I'll reach out to the chair immediately to try to get an expedited hearing, because there are hearings scheduled as we speak in the next couple of weeks to move for termination on city employees. Outrageous. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. The chair now recognizes the district council from South Boston, Counselor Flynn. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Counselor Flaherty said it best, very clear, is very direct and to the point. And let me just add a couple of points that might be helpful to the discussion. You know, the incredible dedication of our city employees, especially over the last year, has been exceptional. They're cleaning baskets and sweeping floors and helping the elderly in washing dishes and driving an ambulance while the rest of us are at home. So they've been exposed to all kinds of medical challenges. And we don't know what the medical situation is, short-term and long-term, of people that have contacted, contracted, I should say, COVID-19. When I was a young guy, when I was in the military, there was something called the Gulf War Syndrome. And that meant that if you were in the Gulf War area and you were exposed to chemicals, you know, the federal government almost stated that you were inaccurate, and they called it a syndrome. Well, years later, they said it's accurate. People that were in the Gulf War exposed to chemicals and gases and harmful toxins. And now we have a Gulf War registry. I've talked about this over the last couple of years. I'm a member of the Gulf War Registry for illnesses I received, and those were long-term illnesses I received because of the Gulf War, being in the Gulf War area. But I just tried to compare that small point to the large, the bigger point is, we don't know, as I mentioned, what the short-term medical concerns are of city workers in long-term prognosis of city employees. But one thing I do know is that they're out there every day for us, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. On Christmas Day, when we're home with our families, we're a city workers. They're out on the streets providing basic city services. So I think, as I mentioned, City Counsel Flaherty mentioned it, provided the best description of this whole issue, but under no circumstances, and I think most of my colleagues would agree, under no circumstances should we ever terminate a city employee that contracted COVID-19 during this period of time. I would not accept it. I know Counselor Flaherty would not accept it. That's not who we are as a city. So just want to say thank you for Counsel Flaherty for partnering on this important issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. The chair now recognizes the district council from East Boston, Counselor Edwards. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to thank the cosponsors for your leadership. This is a workers' rights issue as well as dealing with the current pandemic. It's so therefore to me, the workers' rights, worker safety, and acknowledgement that we as a city need to rise to the occasion. I just wanted to note that we did have a hearing on the equitable distribution of vaccines, but also on the vaccine paid leave policy. We had that hearing on March 29th. And so I'm not saying that these two are the same. What I am suggesting to the lead sponsors is that we agreed in that hearing to have a follow-up working session specifically on the vaccination leave policy. I think these conversations could be married quite well. We discussed pending ordinance and possibly amending that ordinance to be bigger, to include other protections for workers and COVID. I'm just hoping the lead sponsors are open to that, as it's already pending in government ops, and we have an ordinance already, a draft of it already in the books. I just wanted to note that might help to streamline the conversations. That's all.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. The chair now, I believe he's just unmuted himself, so perhaps to respond to that, the chair recognizes the at-large counsel from South Boston, Counsel Flaherty. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of course, anything that will help our city employees. Fortunately, Counsel Flynn was able to stave off. There was a hearing scheduled for today, actually, termination hearing. But for our involvement, you know, we would have potentially seen city employees get canned today as COVID-19 long haulers. So whatever the administration is telling us and or doing are two different things. So the sooner we can get back into that working session, I'll wholeheartedly support the chair of that committee. But this is a dire situation where city employees have termination hearings scheduled, already in the books, ready to go. And again, but for the great work of our colleague Counsel Flynn, who also came over the boards on Monday, was able to get that matter pushed back to give us an opportunity to bring folks in from personnel, from HR, from labor relations, and ask them, what's going on? How is this happening? How do people contract COVID-19 on the job and we're pushing them out the door? It's outrageous. So I will do in support and partner with any one of my colleagues that wants to raise this to the level that it needs to be. And the fact of the matter is that no city employee who contracted COVID-19 over the last year should be being shown the door. They should be given every opportunity to get back healthy and to get every treatment possible. That's where I'm at.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. The chair now recognizes the district council from Alston-Brighton, Counsel Braden. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wholeheartedly support this initiative. Way back in the spring last year, we had a hearing about occupational presumption and addressing many of these issues, that if an employee contracts COVID in the course of their duties, then it should be without question that they should be getting the support of occupational health and all necessary supports to get on a path to recovery and to return to gainful employment. So I look forward to the conversation, and thanks to the cosponsors for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Would any further counselors wish to discuss this late file? Would any further counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Edwards. Please add Counselor Asabi George. Please add Counselor Bach. Please add Counselor Arroyo. Please add Counselor Wu. Please add Counsel Campbell. Please add Counsel Mahia. Please add Counsel Braden. Please add the chair. And this late file docket will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations, and I will leave it to the two lead sponsors and the chair to figure out how to sort of implement that on some work that's already currently underway. So third late file matter will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, would you please read the fourth late file matter and place it before this body?
Thank you. Offered by Counselor Campbell, Andrea Campbell, in the City Council. Whereas law enforcement officials and media sources reported that in August 2020, Patrick Rose, Sr., was arrested and charged on multiple counts of child rape and indecent assault on a child under 14. He was also facing one charge each of aggravated rape, enticement of a minor, open engrossed lewdness, and dissemination of matters harmful to minors. Therefore, be it ordered that under the provisions of Section 17F of Chapter 452, the Acts of 1948 as amended, any other application provisions of the law, her honor the mayor be and hereby is requested to obtain and deliver to the City Council within one week of the receipt thereof the following information. Documents related to the Boston Police Department's investigation of former police officer and former president of the Boston Police Patrolman's Association, Patrick Rose, Sr., for charges of child rape, sexual assault, and other related charges.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the district council from Metapan and the chair of the Council's Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, Counsel Campbell. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Mr. President, I will be short and sweet. I know we are late, and I'm sure all of you have somewhere to be. We obviously, this is not just on behalf of me. Obviously, I'm filing it as the chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, but I first want to thank you, Mr. President, for your leadership in pulling all of us together to respond to these horrific allegations with respect to a former police officer in our police department. And not only want to applaud you for your leadership and pulling us together, but also each council colleague for signing on to a joint statement in response to these horrific allegations. The 17F is just a tool that I have filed formally after discussion, of course, with our president. Because of rules, his name isn't on it, but it would be if we didn't have rules that restricted it to one person. But he felt as though, and I did too, that it should come from the chair. But that being said, the goal of this 17F is to specifically push the department and administration to deliver documents on how the department handled the criminal complaint and subsequent internal investigation in this matter in 1995. Documents on any related disciplinary action, including whether Rose was placed on leave during the investigation, how disciplinary decisions were made, and what personnel were made aware of these allegations. Documents on any steps taken by the department to restrict his access to children or cases of sexual assault after the internal investigation in 1995. Documents related to the department's efforts to shield Rose's misconduct from the public and a date by which, of course, the public in this council can expect those documents. We said a week. It was good to hear that the administration and the department has agreed to release these documents within a week, which is a step in the right direction. Of course, all of these requests in no way violate the rights of any victims or require any release of victim details or complaint details. And I think it's important to name that, critically important. And so at this point, seeking suspension of the rules in passage of this 17F formally to get to the administration in a formal capacity, even though, of course, they're very much aware of it. Thank you, and my apologies for it being a late file.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilor Campbell. Any further discussion on this fourth late-file matter? All right, we, with, excuse me, with 17Fs, we don't allow for cosponsor, so we're going to go right into the roll to deliver this 17F. Madam, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Councilor Mejia, the floor is yours.
Sorry, President O'Malley. No, I was just going to just offer, just to add my name. And I also just want to be super mindful of how triggering this could be for a lot of abuse survivors. And I just, as, as we continue to have this conversation, I just really want to make sure that we are also acknowledging how triggering this is for a lot of people who are having to relive their own experiences. So I do think that as a city, we need to really think thoughtfully about what type of support services we're offering to people who right now are being re-triggered by these conversations.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Mejia. Important point to note and duly noted. Thank you for that. Any further discussion on this fourth late-file matter? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll and we are voting to advance the 17F order that Councilor Campbell, on behalf of the entire council, is introducing. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you. For a late-file 17F, Councilor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councilor Arroyo, yes. Council Baker. Councilor Buck.
Yes.
Councilor Buck, yes. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Campbell.
Yes.
Council Campbell, yes. Council Edwards.
Yes.
Council Edwards, yes. Council Sabi George.
Yes.
Council Sabi George, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Mejia.
Yes.
Council Mejia, yes. Council O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. And Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. Mr. President, the 17F has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We are now moving on to announcements. Do any counselors wish to have any? I'm sorry?
Consent agenda?
Oh, you are, I, I'm sorry. Moving on to the consent agenda, seeing no objection to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Consent agenda, Councilor Arroyo. Councilor Arroyo, yes. Council Baker. Council Buck.
Yes.
Council Buck, yes. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Campbell.
Yes.
Council Campbell, yes. Council Edwards.
Yes.
Council Edwards, yes. Council Sabi George.
Yes.
Council Sabi George, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Mejia.
Yes.
Council Mejia, yes. Council O'Malley.
Yes.
Council O'Malley, yes. And Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. Mr. President, consent agenda has been approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any, we're now moving on to green sheets before we get to announcements. I'm obviously anxious to hear from my colleagues, but would any members wish to move any, remove anything from the green sheets? Seeing and hearing no takers, we've done the consent agenda. We are now moving on to announcements. If any counselors would wish to speak, please raise your electronic hand or otherwise. Chair recognizes the district council from Beacon Hill. Council Buck, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And I'm rising on two topics today. One is just to say happy budget day to everyone and to say that there will shortly be a full budget calendar coming out from my office, being duly noticed, both with all of our hearings but also the working sessions ahead. And I'd also remind counselors and their staff that we'll be holding staff clinics as well. So I encourage staff to come to the staff clinics, talk about the budget topics, and then I would ask colleagues to come to working sessions or make sure that you and your staff are sending questions in advance because those are going to be the basis for us sending questions in advance to the hearings. And like last year, we'd like to, we'd like to get as much substance on the table as possible in those hearings, so it really helps to do that work ahead. I also wanted to draw out a counselor's attention and the attention of the public that, in particular, in our first week of review, on Monday, April 26, we will be starting, once duly noticed, with a 10:00 AM hearing from, with the administration. But we'll also be having that afternoon at 4:00 PM a community working session, which is really actually, the aim is to answer people's questions about how to read and parse the budget. So we'll be doing that as kind of an unusual, open working session for members of the public who are digging in. And then on Wednesday, April 28, at 6:00 PM, we'll have the first of our public testimony hearings, which will be really focused on what people want to see in an equitable recovery. So looking forward to the budget scrutiny process ahead and everybody's participation and both on this body and in the public. So just wanted to flag that for everyone and say, please pay attention to the emails coming from Ways and Means in the immediate future. And I'm also having office hours for counselors and staff tomorrow at noon. That's really just for, you know, if folks are going to take some time at all next week during, obviously, Patriots' Day and School Vacation Week to read the budget and have any, like, questions in advance that they want to touch base with our office on, we'll be doing that tomorrow at noon. So we'll send out a note about that, too. And then the second thing, Mr. Chair, is I just wanted to say a word about the two cabinet heads who are ending their service with us tomorrow. Throughout this pandemic, our COO, Pat Brophy, has been in charge of managing appropriate COVID response across all our facilities. And our CFO, Emma Handy, has had the same responsibility across all our personnel. And I'm just feeling very mindful that, to a huge extent, over this past year, we've thrown immense additional responsibilities on top of the full regular plates for so many of our city workers, really up and down hall or departments. And at the top of the pyramid, these two leaders, Chief Brophy and Chief Handy, have really exemplified a Herculean effort to meet the emergency and keep our city and our city workers safe. It's, it's been relentless work, and I think it's really appropriate that they're both ending their terms of service tomorrow on one Boston day because the city owes them such a debt. And I'm not sure we're stopping enough in this moment because of how much is going on to say thank you. And I hope that tomorrow for Chief Brophy and Chief Handy and so many of our other city workers whom they represent, we will stop to express that thanks. I wanted to say on my own behalf, Chief Brophy and I got started a bit on the wrong foot when he filibustered my first department budget hearing last year, which set a terrible precedent. But, but he's done incredible work getting so many major transformative capital projects off the ground across the city, including right here next to us with the overhauling of City Hall Plaza. And, you know, I think all that work really means that his impact on the city in this role is going to stand embodied in brick and stone and steel for many years to come. So outside the city hall, they'll be able to say, what's written about Christopher Wren at St. Paul's in London? It says, if you seek his monument, look around you. And I just want to wish Chief Brophy all the best. And when it comes to Emma Handy, I actually started to admire her before I met her. She was appointed CFO in November 2017, and I remember Googling her because I was working at the Boston Housing Authority, and so I was trying to judge whether she'd be open to putting support for BHA public housing needs in the city's capital budget. And eventually, it turned out she was persuadable on that point. But what struck me immediately was that Emma was, as a relatively young woman, already so qualified at that point for the role of CFO in a financial field that still so rarely places women at the helm. And as a young woman working in policy, Emma was spreadsheets myself at the time. That was inspiring for me. And my estimation of her has really only grown as I've worked closely with her in my capacity as the council's Ways and Means Chair around the budget and so much else. She's a working mother whose second child arrived in the middle of this pandemic, even as she was doing all that Herculean work on our behalf that I mentioned earlier. And she really exemplifies a poise in the midst of chaos, a passion for public service, and a deep sense of duty. You know, we have Emma to thank for a continuing AAA bond rating and strong financial stewardship that puts us in the strongest possible position for an equitable recovery. We have her to thank for a far-reaching transformation of our HR operations and for putting into motion a number of measures that will help the city really shift forward on equitable procurement in the months ahead, I think. And we even have her to thank for the strong team of Justin Sterrett at CFO and Drew Smith as deputy, who will be taking over in her absence. So I was thinking about what adjectives to use about Emma's work, and there's this word that often gets used in relationships to fiscal issues, prudence. Emma is a real example of prudent fiscal leadership. But there's also this, this quote from Voltaire, which I'm going to adapt a little by altering the gender. The prudent woman does herself good, but the virtuous one does that good for other people. The, the stuff that a CFO manages is really all the sticky, difficult stuff. It's money and taxes and HR and contracts. And here at the council, we so often want the city to spend as much as possible in all departments, pay our city workers as much as possible, and also at the same time keep property taxes as low as possible. And, you know, we represent our constituents. We want it all. But to achieve the right balance of all those demands, a democratic body like ours needs to be able to work in partnership with exceptional professionals and public servants like Emma Handy. So I feel keenly what a loss we'll experience with her departure tomorrow. And I really want to thank Emma for her fiscal prudence, but most of all, for her virtue and for all the good that she has done on behalf of a large number of other people, specifically the people of Boston. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Buck. Really beautiful words, and certainly attached myself to all the sentiment you just made. Thank you very much. Chair now recognizes the district council from South Boston. Councilor Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, when I was speaking earlier on the event about Puerto Rican veterans, I failed to mention that the Commissioner of Veteran Services was also there, who's Puerto Rican as well. Rob Santiago, who's a friend of mine, does a tremendous job as the Commissioner of Veteran Services. So I just want to say thank you to Rob, to Commissioner Santiago, and his team for their work. But, you know, Mr. President, during this pandemic, the City of Boston Veteran Services worked closely with Congressman Lynch and Congresswoman Presley in making sure that vaccinations were available to veterans across the city and actually, and Chelsea went through Pivier as well. And they had a great system, was well organized. So I want to say thank you to the City of Boston Veteran Services Department for their great work during this pandemic. And I'm very proud of them. I'm proud of their commitment to the residents of Boston. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilor Flynn. Any further announcements from colleagues? Seeing and hearing none, we are now moving to memorials. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory and in honor of the following individuals. For Councilor Arroyo, Laura V. Dowd. For Councilor Baker and Abstentia. And Councilor Sabi George, Mary Beth Engeneri. For the chair on behalf of all counselors, Bus Police Officer Jose Fontanaz. And for the chair on behalf of all counselors, Dante Wright. A moment of silence, please. Chair now moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals and is scheduled to meet again remotely on Wednesday, April 28, two weeks from today, at 12:00 noon. All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The council is hereby adjourned.
Great job, Mr. President.
Thank you, everyone. Bye, everybody. Have a nice afternoon.
You guys, too. Bye-bye.
Bye. Thank you.